Hang on, I gotta get all this together.
Seven o'clock. Seven o'clock, we'll call this meeting to order. Start with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Where's my board call?
Reading of the call.
Guess what, I don't have it.
Oh no.
I can, I can read it off of your watch my call account. It's not here, it's not here. Let me see if it's on yours. Oh, this looks great.
No, you said it off.
No, I didn't.
No, you said it off.
Dear Supervisor, please be advised that the Tremplaw County Board of Supervisors will meet at 7:00 PM on July 17th, 2023, in the county board room. All county board members' claims are due in the county clerk's office by noon on July 6th, 2023, so they can be prepared for audit committee approval. Sincerely, Paul Segerson, County Clerk.
Rock call.
Bridget Turner.
Here.
Stacy Klein.
Here.
Richard Sasha.
Here.
Lori Severson.
Here.
Andy Todd.
Here.
Emery Palmer.
Here.
Kevin Adams.
Here.
Dick Miller.
Here.
David Horsh.
Here.
John Austin.
Here.
Dawn Waldera.
Here.
Robert Becker.
Here.
Dan Schreiner.
Here.
Kellen Nelson.
Here.
David Larson.
Here.
Jeannie Nutter.
Here.
Ron Johnson.
Here.
Perfect attendance.
Hopefully, media laws have been properly posted with notification and been complied with. We have 11 item agenda, looking for approval. Most made and seconded, most by Ms. Nutter, seconded by Ms. Turner. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's carried. Approval of the minutes from June. Most by Mr. Johnson. Seconded by Stacy Klein. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? They're carried. Now for the important part, county administrator presentation by our ad hoc committee along with Andy Phillips and Sarah. So, who wants to start it out? You need TV studio or something? Huh? The IT director's right behind you. Yeah, I don't think he knows either.
All right, thank you for having us. Back in July. Back in July, this board had asked that an ad hoc committee get together to discuss administrative options for the county. And we have taken some time and done that, and we're coming back with a recommendation to you today. We do have Sarah Diedrich-Cazdorff with the WCA. She's the Director of Outreach and Member Engagement. And also Andy Phillips, who is the General Counsel for WCA. With us today, they're going to help answer any questions that folks might have. Andy, our source of truth.
Wow.
Okay. Yeah.
That's a heavy burden.
No pressure. Yeah, no pressure. All right.
And then if we could just hold questions for afterwards when we get into discussion.
All right, where's my slideshow button? All right, so just to get started, as I stated, I apologize, I got ahead of myself. We did create the ad hoc committee to discuss leadership options for the county. That team has taken into consideration many, many factors, leading to its ultimate recommendation. The following selection or sections that are going to be presented to you today are what the board or the committee had felt was the most important considerations for this team to consider.
Okay, so then the administrative options, there's three. So we've got the county executive, the county administrator, and then administrative coordinator. So then we're gonna go through the three of those. Okay, so then first of all, the county executive. So that's laid out by Wisconsin Statute 59.17. It's required for counties with population of 750,000 plus, and they're elected to a four-year term. So they serve as chief executive offer or officer of the county, and as such, they have considerable authority such as veto power. So some of the counties in our state that have a county executive are Dane, Milwaukee, Waukesha, Racine, and Brown, those larger counties.
A county administrator is a position that's laid out by Wisconsin Statute 59.18. It's an option for counties with a population of less than 750,000 people. This position is created by resolution with majority vote of the county board, or it can be created through a petition and referendum. The administrator can have additional duties, such as Human Resources Director. The position does serve as chief administrative officer of the county, but they answer to the board. Their duties are specifically outlined by statute, and again, they are accountable to the county board.
Okay, then the third option, which we currently have, is the administrative coordinator. So that position is laid out by Wisconsin Statute 59.19, but it is very vague, vaguely defined. So that's a person that's designated by the board, maybe a county employee or an elected or appointed official. They're responsible for coordinating administrative and management functions of the county, but not otherwise vested by law in boards or commissions. And the position structure varies by county, so it might be a standalone position, or it might be combined with another county position.
So what are the responsibility of a county board? The county board is responsible to involve, represent, and be accountable to its constituents, first and foremost. They are responsible to determine which services are provided, the overall mission of the county, and purpose of the county. The board should hire, evaluate, and retain good administration, review and ultimately approve budgets, control taxing and spending, strategically plan with a long-term focus, and through the use of standing committees, provide oversight and cooperative decision-making for each committee that the supervisor is a member. County boards should not be responsible for staff performance evaluation or disciplinary measures, investigation of allegations of poor or non-performance, ensuring compliance with or enforcing policies and ordinances, day-to-day operations of the county, coordinating the overall collective and consistent operation of the entire county government as a whole. There is legal opinion, as cited in the publication Limits of County Board Administrative Authority, prepared by Alan Probst and Philip Freiberg from the University of Wisconsin. They state, "It is evident that supervisors' administrative authority does not exist, and the essence of all applicable legislation is to limit and outright prohibit board members from becoming directly involved with supervision of county employees." The title supervisor is in fact a misnomer in that it does not confer the right to actually supervise. An example is the board of the Green Bay Packers. That board sets policy, but the board does not draft the players, and they do not call the plays. As quoted by Henry Ford, "If you always do what you've always done, you'll always get what you've always got." So, what should we do?
Okay, so then our recommendation, after considerable research, due diligence, consultation with the WCA, conversations with other counties, and weighing the pros and cons, the ad hoc committee recommends pursuing a county administrator that is combined with the Director of Human Services role. Oh, I'm sorry, did I?
Yeah, you said Human Services.
Oh, Human Resources, okay. It's funny because I've corrected so many people on it in the last couple of weeks. It was stuck in my head. Okay, thanks. So why an administrator and not a coordinator? The WCA has advised an administrator is the clearest and most accountable administrative form. WCA's guidance in this and other county matters is highly respected. The county administrator is clearly defined by statute and is an extension of the board. An administrator offers the board one person to hold accountable for the operations of the county. Qualifications for the county administrator are well-defined and are similar to a private sector chief executive officer. And why an administrator and not a coordinator continued, the coordinator has little statutory direction and no authority over department heads. A coordinator blurs the line between policy and administration. Counties with an administrative coordinator have higher expenditures per capita, according to the 2020 data. So we found that the administrative coordinator, the county average is 1427. Per person, yep, per capita, yep. Median is 1236. Just for reference, Tremplaw County was just below the median. And then county administrator, county average is 1,176, with the median being 1215.
So why a dual-role county administrator and human resources director? So qualifications for the county administrator and the HR director overlap. The dual would reduce cost burden to the county. We did research and found that Burnett County currently uses this model effectively and successfully, and have been for many years. With Tremplaw County's current need for an administrator, in our opinion, and a human resources director, we're in a position to implement this as a starting point with the option to make changes in the future should that become necessary. Because the county administrator is also the HR director in a combined role, the wage impact is less than a standalone position would be and would not require additional staff. Wisconsin county administrator wage range from $92,500 to $225,000 per year, with a median wage of $158,750. Tremplaw County's HR director wage range is $82,326.40 to $111,113.60, with the median being $96,720. If we were to look at hiring an administrator, even offering the median wage that we found in Wisconsin, we would be looking at a cost difference of $62,030 per year by adding this position currently, and that's going with the median wage. We do not know what wage we would offer for this being a smaller county, and we would look to our resources to help set that wage. The ad hocs committee's recommendation would be to determine wage through Carlson-Detman.
Okay, and then benefits to existing county operations, further defined. So benefits of the county administrator slash the HR director position. To effectively lead and manage the county's 260 employees, which equates to two, or FTEs, yep, equates to 226 full-time equivalents, or FTEs. Effectively manage and contain costs at the county, of the county's, I'm gonna shrink this here, $80 million annual budget and gain savings within the budget. That would be a big focus for bringing someone on like this, is to have them reduce costs overall. Provide the board with one person to hold accountable for implementing the board's expectations of the county. That would be on that day-to-day basis. Provide guidance, leadership, and mentoring for department heads and all staff, including participation in disciplinary action as defined by policy and/or as approved by the board. More benefits, decrease turnover, increase employee satisfaction, create, amend, and/or enforce countywide and departmental policies and procedures to be adopted by the board, oversee and ensure efficient operations of each department within the county, including human resources, address issues timely involving the board as appropriate. We saw this as another big benefit as being here on a day-to-day basis where we meet monthly. Conduct regular staff meetings with department heads, hold employees accountable to following established expectations and interpersonal relationships. And then so on, to ensure appropriate effective communication among all county employees and the board and the public. Establish and maintain effective working relationships with other local units of government within the county, with an emphasis on establishing cooperative goals and achieving efficiencies in overall operations. And then keep abreast of federal and state programming requirements, changes to statutes or other regulations, grant opportunities, and include impacts on the county.
So what would our next steps be? WCA has provided options to the ad hoc committee that would help facilitate the recruitment and integration of a county administrator. So should the board approve the county administrator HR director position, the committee would recommend pursuing public administrative, excuse me, administration associates, PPA, to assist with next steps, as well as creating another ad hoc committee to assist with recruitment and integration of a new county administrator. Those next steps would be to create a job description for a county administrator, human resources director, set a wage range, create an employment agreement. This is an important piece, something that we reached or looked into quite heavily as a committee. And an employment agreement would be created by the county and set to reflect our expectation of that person. We would then need to review and amend policies, ordinances, and board rules, and begin recruitment.
Okay, and then a high-level timeline. So if this is approved, then in August, the PAA meets with county board and employees to review characteristics desired in an administrator HR director, to get that process started. And then in September of 2023, finalize job description, begin recruitment, close position for approximately 30 days. Moving on to October, PAA reports to county regarding all qualified candidates. PAA schedules candidate interviews, meet and greet, and tour at the county, and we make an offer. Then in November, we negotiate employment agreement with the selected candidate. And then November through December would be board review and approval of the selected candidate, with them potentially starting in February of 2024.
So in summary, the advantages of a county administrator far outweigh any disadvantages or perceived risks for Tremplaw County. Please refer to the submitted resolution for your consideration. So now we'll open it up to questions, and again, remember that both Sarah and Andy are here from WCA to help us answer those questions. Kevin?
I was also wondering for the committee or the county association, if we did approve administrator, what would exactly be the roles of the committees then, at that point? Would we be like an advisory role, what's, what would we be doing?
Yes, good evening, Andy Phillips. I was here about a year ago to talk about you.
Andy, Andy, you're gonna have to come and use the mic since it's, I know.
You're making me walk all over the place. The true secret is not walk. Last year I was here to talk about the role of the county board, the role of staff and administration within county government, and I talked about the role of the board and the role of the board's committees. And in that presentation, you might remember that I talked about the real heavy lifting being done at the committee level in terms of policy development, because by the time it gets to the county board, it should be thoroughly vetted at the committee level. And so when we think about the role of the committee, it's the same dual role that the board has, and that is number one, to assist the board in policy development, and then number two, to ensure that you have accountability for staff performing according to the policies established by the county board. I don't know how Tremplaw County currently operates, so I can't speak to what's going to change if you approve a county administrator position. All I can tell you is that from a structural standpoint in Chapter 59 of the statutes, nothing is going to change in terms of what the committee's responsibilities are, and that is to assist in policy development and also ensure accountability with staff and administration. Ultimately, it's the administrator's responsibility.
Don't leave.
Sorry.
No, you're fine.
More questions?
Yes, and I apologize, I wasn't here a year ago to necessarily hear your presentation, but I guess you were being told that the advantages outweigh the disadvantages. Can we speak to some of the disadvantages or perceived risks you encountered in your research of this subject?
Yeah, I think that honestly, for the vast majority of our research, we didn't find that there were many disadvantages other than cost. I think that the advantages were very clear to us, but we also understand that there are other people who may not believe that that's true. So when we speak to any disadvantages or perceived risk other than cost to the county, but we do think that we will be able to recover that expense through having administration to control it, I don't believe, and I'm speaking for the committee, so if anyone else thinks differently, that we identified other disadvantages. Except maybe Stacy.
Jeannie's gonna say the same thing. No, I, you could just give your example, Stacy. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, thank you. When you were just talking about this with the county administrator in Burnett County, when they talked about removing that position and what happened within the departments who came to the county board meeting, I mean, you could tell the story better than me.
Yeah, you might have to tell that one. I don't know if we discussed that as much. I was just gonna mention, that was, okay.
Oh, that was you, okay.
But I can, I mean, at some point, I can speak to my discussions with Nate in Burnett County. But I was gonna mention too, I think the only real worry that we came across was finding the right person to fill this, especially since it's new. Typically, when it's a new position, that person's not gonna stick around for very long. There's gonna be a lot of transition. You know, there's been a lot of, there's a lot of people that have been here a long, long time, and things have just been done, you know, this way for so long, and there's plenty of people that don't like change. So just like with any, filling any other position, I think that was maybe, besides talking about the cost, was our only real concern.
Sarah, maybe you could tell the story of what happened in Green Lake County. For some reason, I thought it was Burnett.
See, I thought you weren't gonna have to talk.
I mean, you came, so you might as well talk.
I bring the big gun, so I can just sit and relax tonight. Now, the story I shared with the committee was, I was asked to come to the Green Lake County Board one evening to discuss the three different forms of government, the executive, the county administrator, and the administrative coordinator, because their county administrator was retiring, and there was a supervisor that wanted the county to consider going back to an administrative coordinator. And so I got done giving the presentation, they went into the public comment period, where there was about 10 different department heads from Green Lake County that came to the meeting and all spoke in favor of maintaining the county administrator position and not going back to the administrative coordinator, and it was a part-time administrative coordinator. The reason for that was they saw the efficiencies after a number of years between finance and budget, the efficiencies with being able to solve issues more quickly when they arose with personnel or other items that arose. They were able to be very nimble, as opposed to having to wait till the next county committee met in order to resolve those issues. So those county employees and department heads felt strong enough about maintaining the administrator system that they all showed up at the board meeting that night and spoke in favor of maintaining a full-time county administrator.
Let me just interject quickly too here, because this is the biggest, and it's all about perception here. It's a lot of perceived concerns. And so what I hear from other counties who are making this transition from administrator to coordinator to administrator, the biggest issue I always hear about is this. Who right now hires department heads? Who does it?
Committees.
Committees. Under the administrator model, who hires department heads? The administrator. But who has final say-so on that hiring? The board. And so to me, it is a perception issue. People think that they're relinquishing some authority or control over county government operations by moving to administrator, and they think, well, I was elected by my constituents to make sure that I had a good handle on what was going on in Tremplaw County. And one of the ways I ensure that I have a good handle on what's going on is that I have a real, live interaction and relationship with those department heads. That doesn't need to stop happening. That's why we talk about a perception of relinquishing control. Essentially, what you're doing is offloading a lot of the dirty work that goes into the day-to-day operations of the county, but you maintain policy oversight 100%. You want to report, you tell the administrator you want to report. You want a meeting, you tell the administrator you want a meeting. You can have as much interaction and relationship as you want to have, but you leave a lot of the heavy lifting when it comes to day-to-day operations to the administrator. So that's what I've heard as one of the reasons that people are leery of moving toward the administrator model.
Chair? Maybe I can help answer Emery's question a little bit too. As a member of the ad hoc committee, I mean, we went round and round a lot on this kind of topic. Let me give you a better example of where I'm coming from when it comes to what was said. You know, it's a perception thing, but it could be perceived as a problem or a disadvantage. When we set policy, which we need to go through our policies and make sure they're right, when we do that, we give authority to that administrator to make a decision. We're not used to a person making decisions without us having a democratic vote in a committee. That is a perception on us that it's a bad thing, but only if we don't agree with the policy that we set forth in the first place. So is it bad or is it good? We gave them the authority and the policy to do it. So we're relinquishing that individual decision on a day-to-day basis, because we should. That's what we're supposed to be doing. We're supposed to be making sure that the people that we put in place and we hire are the right people, and they're following the policy. So it's more of a semantics. Is it a bad thing or not to write the right policy and then have a person in charge of making those decisions? So we're, some of us are not gonna like the decisions if we go this direction of that administrator. That's, that's the disadvantage. If, if it's a disadvantage.
Well, and I guess I would ask, if we're as committees still shaping those policies, does that administrator have a role in shaping, drafting those policies as well? And what do they end up with a vote on those, or are they simply serving at our pleasure, helping draft where otherwise that role would be filled by a department head or such drafting those policies and ordinances?
If you'd like me to answer, I can. The administrator never gets a vote. No, that doesn't happen. That's your job. That's why you get the big bucks, all right? And so the administrator will draft policies if you instruct the administrator to draft policies. If you want to, as a committee, take that policy on yourself and say to administrator, "Don't worry, we got this," that's on you. You can do that too. So it really depends upon the relationship that you have with your administrator and you set the expectations. Comment was made earlier about the importance of that employment agreement. I would take that a step further and say, have policies that clearly define the role of the administrator. If your county board rules, and I don't know the answer to this, I don't know if your board rules are in ordinance, are they? Put in, take a look at your board rules and define that role of the administrator, codify it in ordinance. It's a permanent feature of Tremplaw County government, talking about the role of the administrator. I think that's very important to set those expectations upfront.
And that is part of what PAA would be assisting us?
Yeah, and that's what I want to make sure I'm fully understanding as we go through this discussion, how much flexibility we have in setting that role and those limits of that administrator, that they're truly still would be answering to the committee, addressing our concerns versus being this separate entity that's making more decisions without our input.
Directly within the state statutes, the county administrator role is defined and speaks to what they can and can't do. We can take that a step further and further define it, but we can't take away from what's in statute. I don't know if you would like to speak to that, but...
Yeah, sure. If you look at 59.18, it says, "The county administrator shall appoint all department heads, subject to county board confirmation." So the county administrator, even if he or she wanted to, can't say to the board, "You guys go ahead and appoint department heads." You can't do that, all right? "County administrator appoints members of boards and commissions," not committees, but boards and commissions. And so if you have a commission that you've created within county government, the administrator makes the appointments to that commission, subject to board confirmation. The administrator prepares an annual budget. Doesn't speak, the statute doesn't speak to the process for preparing that budget. And so I know in one county in particular, the administrator works very closely with finance and executive committee in the preparation of that budget and through that whole process. That's okay. That's okay. Administrator, though, has the final say-so on taking that budget and presenting it to the county board. That responsibility cannot be relinquished, it's set by statute. And then we know that there is an entire laundry list of other things the administrator does, especially considering that administrator, as contemplated here tonight, is going to also be HR director. We have, you have the authority and the ability, under 59.03 of the statutes, which is the Freedom Statute, to organize yourself how you best see fit, and this is one of the elements of that statute where you can define all of the other stuff that the administrator is going to be expected to do.
Thank you.
Go ahead. You just touched on where I was, my question was going. We are proposing that the person to be hired is going to wear two hats. Where do, where and how do we not have a problem with HR being considered the favorite program? Or, that, that type of thing? How, how and what could be done to make sure that stays separate, but...
Yeah, I think that's a good question. So is it fair, number one, to place and impose a responsibility on one person to be administrator and HR director? That's number one. And number two, how do we ensure that if we make that imposition, that both HR director and administrator are adequately performing according to our expectations? You made the job a little bit more difficult by combining the positions. And I don't even want to say combining the positions, because it's administrative coordinator who's also responsible for HR functions, okay? So it's not really combining positions, and administrator's an administrator, it's just you're asking the administrator also perform HR functions. That's not impossible, there are other counties that do this. Nathan Ahalte up in Burnett County is a great example of how it works, and it's working in Burnett. And before Nathan, it was Candace Fitzgerald who held that position in Burnett County, and she did a wonderful job in a dual role. So it can be done. And I think you treat it like every other element of a job description in your evaluation, for example, of a zoning director. Is the head of your planning and zoning department performing adequately as it relates to dealing with zoning issues, dealing with septic issues, dealing with other issues? I mean, you evaluate it as a part of that person's overall responsibilities. Again, not as clean as just a standalone administrator, but it can be done, and we have examples of it being done successfully.
Jeannie, do you have a question?
Well, not really a question, but I just, we, we talk a lot about how policy is, it's the responsibility of every committee to develop policies for the department that they're overseeing. And sometimes I leave meetings exhausted, because we get caught up in the minutia of day-to-day operations and personnel issues, and policy gets set aside, and I don't feel like we're, you know, we're not talking about long-range planning. I feel like we put Band-Aids on things all the time. We have a strategic plan we haven't looked at in 10 years. We need to get back to doing that sort of stuff, and we need direction in how to do that, because we get caught up in the minutia of the day-to-day stuff, which is really stuff I don't want to be involved in, you know? So I, I'm praying that this will happen. I don't know which God to pray to, all of them, but it's critical to pull us out of that and get us back to looking at where, where do we want Tremplow County to be in 2030, 2032? We never even discuss that sort of stuff. And I feel like I'm not doing my job, because I'm not doing that, and I'm not helping the counties that I'm a part of. So that's just my comment.
Go ahead, Ms. Turner.
So, in, in the ad hoc committee's discussions, did anybody discuss what additional staff might be required to support the administrator? I'd be curious to know that.
Do you care to answer, Stacy?
Yeah, whichever.
Go ahead.
The discussion we had is the combination with the HR director would allow us to use existing staff, so we wouldn't have to add on additional administrative staff specifically for the county administrator.
I would say one of the discussion points we had was, we want to have an administrator tell us what they think they need, and then we can decide whether we support that or not. So that doesn't automatically mean we're going to hire other staff, but, you know, we hire the right person, they should be telling us what they need in order to fulfill the policies and meet our budgets. And so that might mean hiring a certain person, not necessarily even in HR, it could be some other department, to help the county do what it needs to do and save money while doing it.
I think initially, we felt that the structure of HR director and county administrator would be able to be supported by existing administrative staff, but our expectation would of course be that an administrator would look at the overall operation of the county and determine where there might be more efficiencies that can be gained and where there might be additional needs. So we don't want to say that we will never have a need to hire additional staff down the road, but we may also be able to gain some efficiencies in other places. So we do need to bring that person on and have those conversations and recognize that it'll be fluid.
Go ahead, Emery.
If I may, I, I agree a lot with what I'm hearing on this, but I also feel like we're being asked to say, yes, we're moving forward with this decision, but we don't really have a framework for how we're going to interact with that person. If we're saying we're going to hire this administrator and wait for them to tell us what they need, yes, that, that's understandable, that they'd tell us what we need, but have we done enough research, enough studying, that we can kind of predict those needs and really know what the impact is going to be to the county versus kind of making an assumption that it's just one position? It's, you know, I feel like we're moving forward with a lot of assumptions, rather than having taken the time. Me personally, I'd like to see a proposed policy of how they're going to interact with the board, have an understanding of what that model looks like, of how things change prior to saying, yes, we're going down this road fully. And maybe I'm misunderstanding what's being proposed, I see those steps in the timeline, but I feel like a lot of that information that's going to be developed, I'd kind of like to be comfortable with and know before I'm able to say, I want to go this direction. So that's my personal thoughts on it.
Yeah, as a committee, we did. We looked at job, many, many job descriptions. Sarah provided us with, I don't know, 20 probably different job descriptions, and probably about 10 employment agreements. And I hear what you're saying, because it was through looking at those that we were able to become comfortable with the position, I think. We discussed many different factors related to those things, and it is why I tried to emphasize the employment agreement. We can't define a position more, or we didn't feel like that was our work as a committee to define that position further. We just know that we, as a county, can have impact in what that job description looks like and what the employment agreement looks like, so we'll be able to make those decisions once we have decided that we're going to go that route, if that makes sense.
Like a separate committee, like another ad hoc committee?
Yes.
Are we talking about continuing the same ad hoc committee?
I think we were, I think we were interested in seeing who else would be interested in doing, in becoming a member, so not necessarily the same committee, it could be, but it could be others.
And then we could have them appointed by next month, regular board meeting? I can think of some people we should probably put back on it.
We, we did talk a lot, Emery, about should we come to the board with the job description and everything, but we've been meeting since January, and just to get to this point was monumental. So we, that, I totally understand what you're saying, but we need to make a decision, do we want to move forward? And when we move forward, then we'll have contract agreements, we'll have job descriptions, the board will decide what they want this position to look like. We didn't think this committee, just the seven of us, should make that decision, correct?
Mr. Miller.
Go ahead. Okay. Emery brings up an interesting point. I think if this does pass, I would certainly encourage Emery to be, consider being on this ad hoc committee as we move forward. We're going to have some adjustments to make as a board. This is going to be new to all of us, and, and especially those of us who've had, who have quite a few years on this board. And change, as we all know, as we get older, becomes maybe a little bit more threatening. But Emery, you haven't been on too long, so you, you can't feel too threatened yet. But I would really encourage this board to, well, I, first of all, I'd like to thank this ad hoc committee for, for their, their hard work on this. For your, for the committee's information, this effort has been discussed for, Doc and I have talked about this several times in the last 15, 20 years. And, and this whole administrative structure has been proven in that time period. And, and the WCA has offered us assistance over the last several years to help us look at this concept. But we are at a position now where I think it's time to move on it and support it now. I do think, Emery and I, and I'll address this to you, that we will have some, a little bumpy road from time to time, but, but we expect that in any administrative structure, and we all can look back at the rocky times we've had without having an administrator. So I think, you know, it is really time to, to move ahead and, and commit ourselves to make this work. And I would encourage, when I was board chair, it pleased me so greatly when we had a significant decision to make, that we, when we had a good, solid vote, we had success. If we had a mediocre vote or a very close vote, then we didn't have as much support to make it work. So I think we have to be dedicated to make this whole concept work, and it, and I'm firmly behind it, and I think it will work.
To Mr. Miller's point, because I remember we had a county board chair, in between him and John, we won't say names, where we had issues with, so whether it's the county board chair and administrator, we're going to have issues or whatever. So, so we've, wouldn't be the first role we've had in administrative bumpy roads.
Again, well, I would like to thank WCA for coming and clearing up some thoughts, I'm sure it helps everybody, and also that ad hoc committee, but I think it's time to, somebody make a motion for the resolution. So I'll read it.
Whereas, Wisconsin stat, state statute requires counties to have a county executive, county administrator, or administrative coordinator to manage or assist in managing the affairs of the county. Whereas on January 4th, 2023, the county board designated corporation council to act as interim administrative coordinator, and created the ad hoc committee to study all administrative options available to the county. Whereas there's ever-increasing complexity associated with county government, thus highlighting the need for full-time administration to oversee the operations of the county. Whereas the county currently has an interim human resources director, who also serves as corporation counsel. Now be it resolved that pursuant to Wisconsin statute 59.18 parentheses 1, Tremplow County hereby establishes the office of county administrator, and the incumbent in such office shall also be the human resources director. And be it further resolved that the personnel and bargaining committee is hereby authorized to enter into a contract with Public Administration Associates, LLC, at a cost not to exceed $20,000, taken from the general fund, to assist the county in the development of the position to include establishing wage, creation of the job description and employment agreement, recruitment, modification of any necessary ordinances, and other assistance as requested. And the county board designates a county administrator of ad hoc committee to assist in the successful recruitment and integration of the new county administrator position, introduced by the ad hoc administrative planning committee, Stacy Klein, Jeannie Nutter, Robert Becker, Kellen Nelson, Dan Schreiner, Dawn Waldera, David Orsh.
Move to approve.
Motion by Ms. Nutter, second by Ms. Turner. Any further discussion?
I'm going to speak up again, even if you're sick of hearing from me. My, my main concern with this, I think that we are going down the right path, looking at a county administrator. I think it can have a lot of value for our county and will, but I am not, for one, comfortable saying, yes, let's sign this resolution and go forward without really knowing what our financial impact to the county is. I firmly believe that what, we have a county administrator in here, that that administrator is going to need support staff, and that's something we should at least be thinking of when we're making this vote, that in reality, you're probably going down a road of needing additional positions. And that's, you know, my personal feeling, and if anyone on the ad hoc committee wants to speak to that, I, has any numbers from other counties of how many people are having additional support staff along with this position, but I, for one, think that our human resources director is plenty busy right now, and their support staff is busy right now, where when you kind of put this other hat on, there's, and are asking them to take charge of budgets and things like that, they're going to need additional support time along with the duties they have now. And so, I'll quiet myself down.
Dawn, it looks like you had a comment?
Is there anything that you can offer in regards to Burnett County with support staff? I, I know we discussed it, but I don't recall the detail.
Yeah, I was just looking at my notes when I spoke with Nate, and he's been really helpful, so if we ever wanted to reach out to him again, he'd be more than willing to do that. I know we went...
Would he be willing to take the job here?
I don't know. Just frame of reference, so like we said, we've got, was it 260?
226.
226 FTEs, yep. They've got 150 FTEs, so just a little smaller county. So he's got some strong people in HR, so he more or less is just the director. He oversees, he meets with the main person in the department on a daily basis. We didn't get into discussions about administrative staff, because my impression, from what he said, was that it didn't edge. But again, we're a bigger county, so it could possibly make a difference. Just looking at my other notes here. Yeah, we talked more about the pros and cons. He felt that employer, like the employee-employer relationships were better. The only con that he had to offer, just so you guys know, was like the grievance procedure, because being the county administrator and the HR director, but then he talked about how easily that flow can go, having another entity involved, like corp counsel, or, you know, someone in a similar role like that, so you can work around that. Let's see here. Yeah, and his salary was based mainly on the county administration role. And he also mentioned it does come down to the person, but, I mean, if we want to, I can reach out to him again and ask him more specifically about the support staff, but one thing that we discussed too, was whoever we bring into this role, we want them to save enough in the budget where they're saving enough, as, as much as their salary is. So any additional cost that would come to the county, they're going to be able to, to eliminate that. That would be an expectation, and that's hard to say sometimes, because you don't know the impacts it'll have on employer retention. I think about the long-term planning, like, as county board members, we're supposed to be the visionaries for the county, but it, it's hard when you get stuck in these, I mean, a bunch of us have been caught up in more of the minutia that Jeannie's talking about, where we don't get to do that long-term planning, and plus, our terms are only two years long, so depending on what's going on, look at how many of us, this is still our first term. And so if you have a county administrator in place, more of that can, you have that continuity. And I think that's just better stability for the, the county and the staff. Sorry, I kind of went off in a different direction, but...
Lori, did you have a comment?
I think one of the things that we probably need to consider too is, could this person find some of these efficiencies? And should they need a support staff or some help, could they find that? And my guess is, they could have a better shot at it than we can, once a month, you know, they're there every day. And I, I think there's always efficiencies in every organization, in every company, you can always find them, and I think it would be great to have somebody that could, could start looking at that a bit.
And I think one of the things we said at the very start was, the efficiencies, hopefully that we have in the last two to five years, well, the turnover of employees is tremendous, and the savings just searching for those replacements, the money you're going to save will more than pay for, and we don't always have to stick with this, this setup either. will more than pay for, and we don't always have to stick with this, this setup either. We can always go back, you know? We always have that option, that's a nice thing. But the monies that we'll save, and I think, like you say, if there's one person there, the employees, I think it might be more peaceful. And stay here and not keep, I mean, that turnover, you know, they save, what, fifty percent of what the person's wages, the cost to hire? Well, when you're hiring forty people a year, that's a lot of money you're throwing away. So, I mean, it's, it's not perfect by no means, but it's, I think it might be a little better than what we have, so, once in a while, change is tough. But sometimes change is good, sometimes it don't work out, but we can always come back to it.
Okay. There's no further discussion? One more comment?
I appreciate everyone's comments. I feel like I'm the only naysayer, and I want to thank everyone for taking a little time to talk to me prior to the vote, and let me feel out your opinions and, you know, where these ideas are coming from.
Any other comments?
No, well, call a roll. Roll call vote, it takes a simple majority, but the more, the merrier.
Yes.
Lori Severson.
Absolutely.
Andy Todd.
Absolutely.
Emory Palmer.
Yes.
Kevin Adams.
Yes.
Dick Miller.
Yes.
David Orsh.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yes.
Don Waldera.
Yes.
Robert Becker.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
David Larson.
Yes.
Jeannie Nutter.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Bridget Turner.
Yes.
Stacy Klein.
Yes.
Guess what?
Again, I want to thank the committee for, for all the hard work they did, and, and thank-
And more work to do.
And more work to do, but.
WCA can help.
My understanding is we're going to have to come up with a new committee, and so I'm looking for volunteers.
Not right now.
We're going to have to do it tonight, but.
Get in touch with.
We'll send you an email.
Okay.
Send an email.
Because you don't answer your phone, so.
I, I do know that we've already extended our thank you, but I, as a member of the ad hoc committee, do want to really sincerely extend a thank you to Andy and Sarah. They've been tremendously helpful.
You're the best.
Thank you.
Congratulations on a unanimous.
That was a little unbelievable.
Love it.
One more comment from me, I sit here quiet, but thank the committee. I was involved twice, and we couldn't get past, I think the last time, four votes, so you folks did the right thing to convince us, so. Thank you very much.
I just want to thank every board member for listening and, and being so supportive. It's just, I'm overwhelmed, really, actually.
Okay.
Well, Andy, drive carefully.
I will. It's all that out, it's beautiful.
Yeah, it still is for another hour.
Thanks, Andy, come back, you'll have a new jail, right?
Yes, yes. We'll, we'll have extra rooms too, Andy.
Two months from today, do we see a conference?
Yep.
All right.
When you come back, we'll have extra rooms. Okay, item B, environmental land use committee.
Whereas William Lambright and Martha Lambright, petitioner, landowner, have requested the rezone of a parcel of land in the town of Preston for the purpose of adding more commercially-zoned land to erect a showroom and office building. Whereas the rezone is on approximately point six-one acres, more or less, and whereas the public hearing was held pursuant to section fifty-nine point sixty-nine parentheses five of the Wisconsin statutes, and whereas the town of Preston supports the rezone request, and whereas the environment and land use committee moved to rezone this parcel from exclusive agriculture to EA two, to commercial C, and it appears that the zoning change request is appropriate under the circumstances. Now be it resolved that the county adopt the attached ordinance amending the zoning district boundaries as indicated. Introduced by environment and land use committee, Kellen Nelson, David Larson, Randy Severson, Stacy Klein, Andrew Todd, Don Waldera, Anthony Munson.
Virg, I don't see Mike, I don't see Mike here. Do you want to come up and explain it?
Did you, Kellen?
Motion by Kellen, second by Ms. Turner.
I'm Virg Gamroth, I'm a zoning technician in the Department of Land Management. Did you have any questions? I think the resolution explains it pretty well.
It's basically for a showroom for his lumberyard, so.
What road was this on?
Pardon?
What road was this re-
County road to F's.
On S there, okay.
Yeah, they had three point zero six acres rezoned previously, and now they just want to add the point six-one to it. Evidently, they have a building there, but they have to drive around the building with semis, and so they didn't want to build onto the back part of it, they just wanted to build on to the front side of it. So we had to rezone more acreage so they can do that.
Okay. Ready for the vote?
Andy Todd.
Yes.
Emory Palmer.
Yes.
Kevin Adams.
Yes.
Dick Miller.
Yes.
David Orsh.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yes.
Don Waldera.
Yes.
Robert Becker.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
Stacy Klein.
Yes.
Richard Sasha.
Yes.
Lori Severson.
Yes.
Seventeen to zero.
Second resolution for a rezone from exclusive ag to commercial for Bowman.
Whereas Austin E. Bowman, petitioner, landowner, has requested the rezone of a parcel of land in the town of Sumner for the purpose of relocating an existing automotive parentheses light truck repair business. Whereas the rezone is on approximately three point six-one acres, more or less, and whereas the public hearing was held pursuant to section fifty-nine point sixty-nine parentheses five of the Wisconsin statutes, and whereas the town of Sumner supports the rezone request, and whereas the environment and land use committee moved to rezone this parcel from exclusive agriculture to EA two, to commercial C, and it appears that the zoning change request is appropriate under the circumstances. Now be it resolved that the county adopt the attached ordinance amending the zoning district boundaries as indicated. Introduced by environment and land use committee, Kellen Nelson, David Larson, Randy Severson, Stacy Klein, Andrew Todd, Don Waldera, Anthony Munson.
Move to approve.
Motion by Ms. Nutter.
Second.
Second by Don, Don, Ms. Waldera. Any comments on this one? Is there any?
Well, on this one, no, we looked, we didn't have any.
Objections?
Objections to it. We felt, we looked at our zoning ordinance table of uses, and we felt that because other body shops that we had previously had to rezone to commercial, we thought that was appropriate. And to be, have the body shop, it has to be in a commercial zone. So we felt that was appropriate, and the committee did too.
Has nobody objected?
No, we had no objection.
Okay, call a roll.
Kevin Adams.
Yes.
Dick Miller.
Yes.
David Orsh.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yes.
Don Waldera.
Yes, sorry.
Robert Becker.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
David Larson.
Yes.
Jeannie Nutter.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Bridget Turner.
Yes.
Stacy Klein.
Yes.
Richard Sasha.
Yes.
Lori Severson.
Yes.
Andy Todd.
Yes.
Emory Palmer.
Yes.
Kevin Adams.
Goodbye.
Dick Miller.
Yes.
Seventeen to zero.
Okay. Another one from executive finance, designate veterans' transportation as a non-lapsing account.
Whereas the Tremplaw County Veterans Service Office has an annual budget for veterans' transportation, and a portion of the funds in this account are from grant programs. Whereas the use of the funds in this account varies year after year, and any unused funds from this line item are returned to the general fund each year. Whereas due to the lapsing nature of this line item, any grant funds placed under this line item would be returned to the general fund at the end of each fiscal year, which is not permissible under the grant programs. Whereas converting this account into a non-lapsing fund would allow grant money that has not, that was not spent in a given year to accumulate year after year, creating a larger pool of funds to be used in times of need for veterans' transportation needs. Now be it resolved that the Tremplaw County Board of Supervisors hereby designates line item one oh one point seven five four seven oh one, veterans' transportation, as a non-lapsing account to be utilized for veterans' transportation needs. Introduced by executive finance committee, David Larson, David Orsh, John Austin, Bridget Turner, Richard Sasha.
Move to approve.
Motion by Ms. Nutter, second by Mr. Larson. Any comments?
Sure.
Yes.
On that first paragraph, a portion of the funds in the account are from the grant program called, is, is there two different line items? And we're only talking about one line item on that?
It's one line item, but it has grant money coming in, and it also has levy money coming in. So those two.
Right, and I remember us talking about that when, when we're in committee, but I didn't realize that there was, so what we're saying here is, we're going to designate those funds to be non-lapsing regardless of whether they're from grant money or not.
Correct. And I can say, from the past years, that money's been all used up. We've never taken any to the general fund. It's, it's been used. But this is just in case.
Would it not be appropriate to have two separate line items in that department? To have one for the grant dollars and another for levy dollars?
It would just be object codes, I suppose we could do that.
Is that how most non-recurring accounts are handled?
No.
But do other non-recurring accounts have money coming into them other than grant dollars? Okay.
Yeah, Parks does.
Levy and donations and grants and, yeah, lots.
Okay.
Okay. Call a roll.
Don Waldera.
Yes.
Robert Becker.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
David Larson.
Yes.
Jeannie Nutter.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Bridget Turner.
Yes.
Stacy Klein.
Yes.
Richard Sasha.
Yes.
Lori Severson.
Yes.
Andy Todd.
Yes.
Emory Palmer.
Yes.
Kevin Adams.
Goodbye.
Dick Miller.
Yes.
Seventeen to zero.
Okay. Another one from executive finance, designate veterans' transportation as a non-lapsing account.
Whereas the Tremplaw County Veterans Service Office has an annual budget for veterans' transportation, and a portion of the funds in this account are from grant programs. Whereas the use of the funds in this account varies year after year, and any unused funds from this line item are returned to the general fund each year. Whereas due to the lapsing nature of this line item, any grant funds placed under this line item would be returned to the general fund at the end of each fiscal year, which is not permissible under the grant programs. Whereas converting this account into a non-lapsing fund would allow grant money that has not, that was not spent in a given year to accumulate year after year, creating a larger pool of funds to be used in times of need for veterans' transportation needs. Now be it resolved that the Tremplaw County Board of Supervisors hereby designates line item one oh one point seven five four seven oh one, veterans' transportation, as a non-lapsing account to be utilized for veterans' transportation needs. Introduced by executive finance committee, David Larson, David Orsh, John Austin, Bridget Turner, Richard Sasha.
Move to approve.
Motion by Ms. Nutter, second by Mr. Larson. Any comments?
Sure.
Yes.
On that first paragraph, a portion of the funds in the account are from the grant program called, is, is there two different line items? And we're only talking about one line item on that?
It's one line item, but it has grant money coming in, and it also has levy money coming in. So those two.
Right, and I remember us talking about that when, when we're in committee, but I didn't realize that there was, so what we're saying here is, we're going to designate those funds to be non-lapsing regardless of whether they're from grant money or not.
Correct. And I can say, from the past years, that money's been all used up. We've never taken any to the general fund. It's, it's been used. But this is just in case.
Would it not be appropriate to have two separate line items in that department? To have one for the grant dollars and another for levy dollars?
It would just be object codes, I suppose we could do that.
Is that how most non-recurring accounts are handled?
No.
But do other non-recurring accounts have money coming into them other than grant dollars? Okay.
Yeah, Parks does.
Levy and donations and grants and, yeah, lots.
Okay.
Okay. Call a roll.
Don Waldera.
Yes.
Robert Becker.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
David Larson.
Yes.
Jeannie Nutter.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Bridget Turner.
Yes.
Stacy Klein.
Yes.
Richard Sasha.
Yes.
Lori Severson.
Yes.
Andy Todd.
Yes.
Emory Palmer.
Yes.
Kevin Adams.
Yes.
Dick Miller.
Yes.
David Orsh.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yes.
Seventeen to zero.
Okay. Another one from executive finance, designate veterans' transportation as a non-lapsing account.
Whereas the Tremplaw County Veterans Service Office has an annual budget for veterans' transportation, and a portion of the funds in this account are from grant programs. Whereas the use of the funds in this account varies year after year, and any unused funds from this line item are returned to the general fund each year. Whereas due to the lapsing nature of this line item, any grant funds placed under this line item would be returned to the general fund at the end of each fiscal year, which is not permissible under the grant programs. Whereas converting this account into a non-lapsing fund would allow grant money that has not, that was not spent in a given year to accumulate year after year, creating a larger pool of funds to be used in times of need for veterans' transportation needs. Now be it resolved that the Tremplaw County Board of Supervisors hereby designates line item one oh one point seven five four seven oh one, veterans' transportation, as a non-lapsing account to be utilized for veterans' transportation needs. Introduced by executive finance committee, David Larson, David Orsh, John Austin, Bridget Turner, Richard Sasha.
Move to approve.
Motion by Ms. Nutter, second by Mr. Larson. Any comments?
Sure.
Yes.
On that first paragraph, a portion of the funds in the account are from the grant program called, is, is there two different line items? And we're only talking about one line item on that?
It's one line item, but it has grant money coming in, and it also has levy money coming in. So those two.
Right, and I remember us talking about that when, when we're in committee, but I didn't realize that there was, so what we're saying here is, we're going to designate those funds to be non-lapsing regardless of whether they're from grant money or not.
Correct. And I can say, from the past years, that money's been all used up. We've never taken any to the general fund. It's, it's been used. But this is just in case.
Would it not be appropriate to have two separate line items in that department? To have one for the grant dollars and another for levy dollars?
It would just be object codes, I suppose we could do that.
Is that how most non-recurring accounts are handled?
No.
But do other non-recurring accounts have money coming into them other than grant dollars?
Part of the reason being, this account just stayed the same for past 10 years or so, and so slowly it's getting further and further down and down. That's where you just want to get it back up, then hopefully it also get us by for a few more years.
Why are we not budgeting more?
Well, that's, I want to discuss that further at budget time. For example, with this top line, you can see there's a, all yours are probably black and white, there's a small dotted line that's showing a constant average. United States average is around 3.8% standard inflations. The last few years, I believe last year was 8%, so we're on a faster climb. Our average is pushing towards 690, and we're getting levied at 600. So as the years go, the roller coaster won't keep up. So we have a year under, a year over, a year that's way over, a couple of years under, they averaged back out. That's the idea of the non-lapsing. But they've slowly accumulated to be farther behind.
Does that make sense?
Well, I guess, I would encourage the, as you budget, certainly in the future, that you, you, and you can't anticipate a severe winter, I understand that, but to draw out $450,000 when you're spending 592, and then you're adding another, what I'm saying is, what a jump that is. What was budgeted last year, do you know?
It's.
600,000.
Okay, as he mentioned, okay.
That's been the same dollar since, I believe, 2014.
Yeah, yeah. I guess what I'm, I guess, I don't still quite understand why, if you made it last year, you didn't make it, the year before, the department was short. You've been short every year.
Yes, it's been.
Can I throw one thing in? They've been supplementing the winter with their summer maintenance money, and that's getting eaten up, too, so they've got to get the winter in line. Build in the inflation that they've had to deal with in the last several years.
And honestly, the 600,000 in the last few years, the way inflations went, may have been fine with the roller coaster of one or two bad years, one or two average okay years, but as you can see, it's continuing to spike farther and farther. So if you would add that up, we're the 287 short now. If we have an average fall from September, that would put us at 222, so there you're roughly 480, almost 500, and we would have an average year of 24. By the January 1st of '25, we would be one full budget year negative.
How much is sitting in that, in that right now, in that fund, in that non-lapsing fund?
Negative 287.
For this year?
828, yep. So part of the, part of the ask is for.
To cover that negative.
To cover, to get to the first of the year. And then the other part is to shore up the lost, or the negative.
Yeah, I think we have, I guess I certainly encourage you, as you move ahead with your budgeting, to try to anticipate that increase. Because I think we, as a board, evidently have voted for a very inadequate budget.
Like I said, I don't want to say any past things were wrong, because if you go back six, seven years, that roller coaster, one year of good, one year of bad, and two years later, you averaged out pretty decent. So yes, going forward, I see where inflation's going, that's, it will be a further ask, but I don't want to get too far off into the budget topics, so.
Well, I think it was more stable there for a while.
Right, yep.
The inflation. Thank you.
Yep, yep.
I have more of a general question, and maybe it can't be answered right now, but Mr. Miller's thought process got me thinking a little bit more about inflation and the budget process. When we do budgeting, and I came onto this team just at the tail end of all of that, so I've not been through it yet fully, do we have, do we look at inflation rates and have department heads add in inflation rates?
We try.
I mean, it's a moving target. It's a moving target.
The levy limits are what, really.
The levy limits control all of them.
That controls it, yes.
It's just so much money we can use, unless it's for a capital investment, we can't borrow or add to the levy. So this has been limited by levy.
Okay. Thank you.
I was going to say, too, this is kind of going ahead a little bit, but on your budget sheets that I have handed out, on the back page, it shows the winter maintenance on there, and what their balance is as of the end of June, $7,800 was averaged, was the 8,000, but.
Well, the good news is inflation is down to 3%.
Anyway, that's 7,800.
From nine a year ago, it is now three.
Well, in some areas. For example, I had this with Mr. Orsh there on our discussion of the salt. This year alone is 9% from, it was at, oh, what's on here? 89.89 for our $23, and for this next year now, it's 97.98, which is.
Let's just hope these prices go down.
Right.
And I don't want to wish for a no-snow winter, because then the snowmobilers will be sad, so there's no winning here.
Well, they could give us all the snow in one weekend and call it good.
That would be good, yeah, that would be good.
Yep.
And during the week and not on weekends.
Yep.
Which week?
Right.
I think, Neil, if you could order the snow to come a little better time.
Right, yep.
We wouldn't have this problem.
I'll work on that.
Any further discussion?
Oh, God, tough decisions.
We have a motion and a second.
Yes, we do.
Call a roll.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
David Larson.
Yes.
Jeanie Nutter.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Bridget Turner.
Yes.
Stacy Klein.
Yes.
Richard Sashow.
Yes.
Lori Severson. Andy Todd.
Yes.
Emory Palmer.
No.
Kevin Adams.
Yes.
Dick Miller.
Yes.
David Orsh.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yes.
Don Waldera.
Yes.
Robert Becker.
Yep, hers.
Sixteen to one.
Hey. Passes. I'm going to do my pen.
It's under there.
Audit Committee.
Whereas the Audit Committee has audited the following claims and recommend that they be allowed as follows. John Austin, $1,167.24. Kevin Adams, $278.60. Robert Becker, $607.20. Ron Johnson, $549.34. Stacy Klein, $233.84. David Larson, $679.03. Dick Miller, $291.92. Kellen Nelson, $1,831.52. Jeanie Nutter, $783.40. David Orsh, $220.96. Emory Palmer, $70.96. Richard Sashow, $252.18. Dan Schreiner, $253.28. Lori Severson, $81.44. Andy Todd, $86.68. Bridget Turner, $191.92. Don Waldera, $177.51. Total per diems, $5,800. Total expenses, $1,957.2. Grant total, $7,757.2. Now be it resolved that the claims be allowed as shown, introduced by Audit Committee, John Austin, David Larson, Jeanie Nutter. Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Sashow, and seconded by Ms. Turner.
Okay, Turner.
We'll call a roll.
No questions? David Larson. David Larson.
Yes.
Jeanie Nutter.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Bridget Turner.
Yes.
Stacy Klein.
Yes.
Richard Sashow.
Yes.
Lori Severson.
Yes.
Andy Todd.
Yes.
Emory Palmer.
Yes.
Kevin Adams.